Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the May 4th, 2019, Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. Take care. Please stand and join me for this first round. Mr. Ross?
I will. Ready? Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the May 4th, 2019, Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. Take care. Please stand and join me for this first round. Mr. Ross?
I will. Ready? Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome again to the Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to welcome our new Chief of Municipal Officer, Mr. Ross, joining us up here for the first time today. Welcome. And we move on to announcements.
Item one on the closed session agenda: Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation, Three Cases Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, on a motion by Supervisor Toffinelli and a second by Supervisor Mills and a unanimous vote of the Board. The Board voted to deny three claims for refund of state-assessed property taxes filed pursuant to Revenue and Taxation Code 5097 by AT&amp;T Mobility LLC, Pacific Bell, doing business as AT&amp;T California, and T-Mobile West LLC. Item two: Conference with Labor Negotiator Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6: County Designated Labor Negotiator Judy Hawkins Regarding Employee Organization Calaveras County Sheriff's Management Unit. There was no reportable action taken. Item three: Conference with Labor Negotiator Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6: Closed Session with County Designated Labor Negotiator Judy Hawkins Regarding Employee Organization Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association. There was no reportable action taken. Item four: Conference with Labor Negotiator Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6: Closed Session with County Designated Labor Negotiator Judy Hawkins Regarding Employee Organization Calaveras County Deputy Sheriff's Association. There was no reportable action taken. And item five: Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.B1. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to announcements.
This is a time for Board members and county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Any announcements from the Board, Mr. Mills?
Yes, just one thing. Saturday and Sunday, Angels Fire has their annual pancake, eggs, ham breakfast, $5 for children, $8 for adults. It's been going on for many years at Utica Park, if anyone's interested in going.
Other announcements from the Board? One quick one. We will be breaking at 11:30 this morning. We'll have the county Frog Jump. I hope you're all enjoying this. It is Frog Jump week, so our holiday season encounters. Announcements from the Board. That'd be good. It's Frog Jump week. We'll be breaking at 11:30 today to go out. We'll have the county employee Frog Jump, and at that time, I will be taking on the Mayor of Angels Camp for the pride of the county. We have a lunch on it, and brought our own gear, so come ready for the action. Announcement from staff. Come on up, Jeff.
Is this mic on? Sounds like it.
That's on.
Good morning, everybody. Jeff White, your interim county building official, chief building official. I have an announcement about Tracket. Tracket's gonna go live May 20th for, let's see if I can remember, everybody, onsite sewage, planning, code compliance, public works, and the tax collector. So, there will be, that will be happening May 20th, and thanks to Stan and Henning for their outstanding work that they did to get this, hit that target date. Building will go online sometime in August, because there's a lot more elements to building than there are with the other departments. We're gonna do some live training, or training for live, the event, the 20th, this week, so staff will get acquainted with the Tracket. And we've also been active with the other department heads relative to this, rolling out of this new software. So, it's been a long, tedious, but done correctly, we think, and we're anxious to see how it works.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you very much, Jeff. Stan? Will you hear Jeff? Other announcements from staff? Seeing no more, we will, we will move on. Clerk? Oh, recognitions and acknowledgements.
Item six is from the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation recognizing the Calaveras County Fair and Jumping Frog Jubilee, May 16th through 19th, 2019.
Great. Supervisor Calloway, I think you have that.
Yes. I'd like Lori Janini and Kathy Campbell to please come up. For those of you who don't know these two women, shame on you. Better get to the front. Are there any people in here who have never jumped a frog before? One. Uh, uh, uh. Well, you need to come jump a frog if you're gonna live in Calaveras. I didn't see you. Kristen, have you ever jumped a frog?
I haven't. My third frog today.
Oh, today's gonna be your first time? Okay. Anyway, this is an awesome, fun week. It's the week where all the schools are closed. Can you imagine the county where they close the schools for two days, on Thursday, Friday, for Frog Jump, and they close down the highway so we can have a kiddie parade? Anyway, that's enough. I'm gonna read this. It's totally my honor. Kathy's on the Board of the Fair. She's an appointee by the Governor, and Lori is the Executive Director, the face of the fair, and knows everything there is about the fair. So, but the Board of Supervisors? Well, we just come along for the ride. Where's the Calabas County Fair and Jumping Frog Jubilee, whose history dates back to the first fair in 1893, will be held May 16th and 19th of this year, of course? And the first modern-day Frog Jump was held in, does anybody know? It's a trivia question. You'll know at your next cocktail party. 1928 is celebrating its 91st year, and whereas the annual fair is a community event which highlights agriculture, the arts, floriculture, the wine industry, frogs, the best of Calaveras, and whereas the Calaveras County Fair generates hundreds of thousands of dollars for the youth of Calaveras County through the Junior Livestock Auction, Industrial Arts Auction, and Scholarship Programs, and whereas the spending activity related to the fair is $5.2 million, and whereas the theme for the 2019 Frog Jump is, can anybody tell me? Oh, my, my, my. All of you. Yes? Oh, well, the Chamber Executive Director, and what is it?
Be a Kid Again.
Be a Kid Again. And whereas the community celebrates together as one, and strangers become neighbors, and children and adults make memories. So, before I ask for the vote, I'd like to turn it back to the Chair of the Board to see if he has anything he wants to negotiate with me.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Calloway. We will move to public comment, and I will start with, I've already issued my challenge to the Mayor, but if you want, if you want to take, be part of this as well, we could wager a lunch on there. What do you think, Supervisor Calloway?
I'll bet you, and I'm gonna bring my colleagues with me. We're all taking you on.
I do want a confirmation that that frog is not from the other side of the river, though, Jeff.
This frog is truly a Calaveras product, from Paloma. It is the promise of Paloma, if you missed the sign, and it's a champion. I could tell this morning, it was the only one that wanted to come out in the cold. So, it's a brave frog, and Supervisor Stopper, I do admire your tie and shirt today. That's very froggy stuff.
And look at him.
And our new CIO as well. You can't fear the frog, Merida.
Don't drop that frog.
So, that's, that's the official Chair's frog today. Are there other public comments today on Frog Jump?
We're gonna hold it for ransom.
Supervisor Mills, you had a comment?
Yeah, we're gonna hold it for ransom.
Hold the frog? Everybody's always picking on Paloma. No more public comment? All right, well, I expect to see you all out, as we adjourn at 11:30, out at the picnic for the county staff, and we'll just see who's, who's the most talented jockey here today. So, we will, I will ask for a motion. Is there a motion?
So, moved. Second.
Moved by Supervisor Mills, second by Supervisor Toffinelli. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0.
So, therefore, we proclaim that the Calaveras Board of Supervisors proclaims the Calaveras County Fair and Jumping Frog Jubilee to be the signature event in Calaveras County, and it's passed and adopted by this Board today.
See, he's trying to get away from that frog. Everybody wants to join the winning team. Nobody wants to see Paloma. He's a poser. Thanks, Laurie. Thanks, Kathy. Seattle Fair. Seattle Lunch. Laurie, thanks. See you soon.
Okay. Apologies accepted.
All right, we'll move on to item seven. Madam Clerk?
Item seven is from Health and Human Services to adopt a proclamation recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Calaveras County.
Thank you. I will read this proclamation, as I serve on the Mental Health Advisory Board for the county, and I'm happy to see so many good people here who serve on that committee with me. So, this is a proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas Mental Health Awareness Month is part of a nationwide effort in the month of May to reduce the stigma and discrimination surrounding mental health challenges, increase awareness of tools and resources to prevent mental health challenges, and reduce the symptoms, and whereas approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14, and three-quarters by the age of 24, and only half of the people with serious form of mental illness seek treatment, and whereas suicide is the 10th-leading cause of death in the United States, and 90% of people who die by suicide have an underlying mental illness, and whereas good mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being to our families, communities, schools, and businesses, and whereas learning the symptoms of mental illness and early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery, and whereas prevention in the form of a healthy diet, exercise, sleep, and stress management is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas the stigma and fear keep many, whereas stigma and fear keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help, and whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence, change negative attitudes, and end the stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness, and whereas everyone can support Mental Health Awareness Month and California's Mental Health Movement, Each Mind Matters, by wearing lime green. Are there any public comments or comments from the Board on this item? Supervisor Calloway? Lights on? Nope? From the Board? From the public?
Yes. So, I have the lime green here. If you guys are interested, I have it here. Thank you for your time. Good morning, Chairman and members of the Board. My name is KB Alvarado, and I am the Program Coordinator for the Calaveras County Health and Human Services for the Behavioral Health Division. Today, I am here to ask you to grant our request to proclaim the month of May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Organizations, agencies, and individuals across the nation dedicate the month of May to increasing awareness of mental health issues and educating the community in hopes to reduce the stigma associated with mental illness. We want to start a conversation about mental health, about how anyone can be affected and that mental illness does not discriminate. Mental health challenges cross economic, social, racial, and ethnic boundaries, and you can't tell by looking at someone if they are struggling with a mental health issue. We want to encourage people to talk about mental health. It's not contagious, this I know, for personal matter. We want people to be able to have a conversation about bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, or depression without fear of judgment or shame. The Living Room, I want to talk a little bit about the Mental Health Division sponsoring the activities through the month of May. So, NAMIWALK, nationally-allied Mental Illness, they have their walk on May 4th in Sacramento. The purpose of this annual event is to raise awareness of mental illness and raise funds for, for the people of Calaveras County, to help individuals and families right here in our region. And the Executive Director shared with me yesterday, they raised about $3,000, so that was really awesome for a small county. Next, we have Mental Health Matters Days, From Trauma to Hope. This event will be held at the Capitol on May 22nd, which will be on a Thursday, to build support for mental health awareness with the community. 20 to 25 peer members, consumers, are signed up to attend this event, and I want to recognize and acknowledge our Behavioral Health Division leadership to support and make this happen for, for this to happen, for all of us to kind of, you know, spend our day there, to learn more what's out there. Next, we have Each Mind Matters Events at the Living Room Peer Center. That will be on Thursday, May 23rd. All is welcome, and we invite you to come and show support. There will be peer speakers, peer members actually are going to speak and empower their stories to others by telling their story, a story of recovery and hope. The Living Room provides opportunities for socialization, education, information on resources, outreach, and help people with mental illness and peer support for recovery in safe and caring place. And I want to, again, to acknowledge and recognize all of the peer consumers and peer staff that organized this event, and hope to see you all next Thursday. I thank you.
Thank you very much. So, others? Anybody else like to speak to the subject? Wendy?
Good morning. My name is Wendy, and I currently work in behavioral health for Calaveras County. I've been working with clients involved in mental health court. One day, a client asked me, Wendy, why do you care? Why do you care about people like me? I simply said, why wouldn't I? Truth is, I care because I've been there. I can talk to you about broken families, addiction, depression, loss, survival, grief, heartache, death, abuse, neglect, abandonment, suicide, and betrayal, or a specific diagnosis. However, I can also talk to you about empathy, kindness, compassion, love, energy, forgiveness, self-love, strength, peace, healing, recovery, gratitude, grace, hope, and the power of positivity. All of these experiences have made me the woman I am today. I am both a combination of light and darkness, and I may be flawed, but I'm not ashamed of my story. I'm a survivor, so having the opportunity to work with clients and witness their success continues to help me heal. Sorry, I don't know. With that said, we have our first graduate from Mental Health Court, Casey Martin, who is here to speak to you today. We will have another graduate this Friday, another in June, and I believe others will continue their way to successful completion. I want to thank everyone involved in Mental Health Court, currently Milton Milshack with the DA's office, Savannah Golee with probation, Kirona Hoskins with Behavioral Health, and Judge Healy. So, first, can I have Casey Martin, and can Martin his dad come up?
Hello. All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Casey, and today I want to tell you how the Integrated Dual Diagnosis Program helped me and aided me with some of my daily struggles. But first, I'll tell you what got me, what got me into the program. Since 2014, I've struggled with mental illness. I was diagnosed with depression, and that quickly turned into the occasional psychosis. That later turned into multiple psych ward visits, and for a while there, it looked like there was no hope. My family didn't know what to do, and then came a blessing in disguise. I got arrested. Part of my terms were probation and being required to attend Integrated Dual Diagnosis, being required to attend an Integrated Dual Diagnosis Program. When I first started the program, I didn't take it that seriously, and I struggled with the occasional failed drug test, and it took a while before I started actually progressing. I adjusted to my medication and started taking a new med when everything in the program started clicking and making sense. With almost daily help, very important help from my caseworker, and weekly meetings with the IDT, IDDT crew, including the group therapist, it seemed like my mental illness finally started becoming under control. I experienced two different group therapists, and they both helped me with my recovery. My caseworker was also important in my life while in the program, going out of her way to make sure I was well-fed, had shelter and transportation, and had someone to confide in. After almost two years in the program, with a few setbacks in the beginning, and losing a good friend from the program, I graduated. Life after, life after the program has been satisfying, to say the least. I still have access to groups and unending contact with my caseworker. I feel like without Wendy, the group therapist, and without Kirona, my caseworker, I wouldn't have had the success that I attained. Thank you for listening, and God bless.
Thank you so much.
He's gonna leave me standing up here. So, very nice to be done. I'm a local member of the community, a business owner, and we've been in Calaveras County for about five years, and Casey's mom and I, her name's Pamela, we've been married for 30 years. Casey's one of three kids. They grew up in Modesto, regular life. Casey's a decorated athlete. He served in the US Army as a heavy armor crewman, and in 2014, things changed. So, what I want to leave with this group is, number one, we didn't expect to have our lives impacted by mental health, and so today, I choose to, my number, where I donate my discretionary money, where we donate, is we donate to the Calaveras County Behavioral Health Program. That's where we choose to, we feel the, there's a need financially. Second of all, the program changed, you know, stepped in and changed Casey's life and changed our lives. And lastly, I would say that credit to Wendy, Kirona, and that group, no question, will, were behind it, but credit to Casey, because without Casey doing it, he wouldn't be standing here today, so I'm proud of you. Good job. So, thank you for the, we're grateful for this program. We believe in it. Thank you.
We have one more guest speaker, and this is Amanda Funk, and she's currently in the program, and she has some words to give you guys also.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. My name is Amanda Funk. I am currently participating in the IDT Mental Health Court Program. I was so excited when Wendy invited me to speak today. This program has truly changed my life, and it gives me pleasure to be able to talk about it with you today. First, I would like to tell you a little bit about myself. One of the projects we have done was to write our life story, and Wendy thought I should share that with you today. It's kind of long, so bear with me. I was born May 4th, 1986, in Stockton, California. My mom and dad had been together for 10 years. My mom had my two older sisters from a previous marriage that my dad helped raise. My mom had wanted a third child for a long time, but my dad thought he couldn't have children. Then finally, after 10 years of trying, I was finally born. We lived in Stockton for five years, then we moved to Valley Springs so I could go to better schools. My oldest sister, Chantella, stayed in Stockton and moved in with her grandma, so it was my mom, dad, sister, Dusty, and I. At first, I was sad because there was no toys or us, there wasn't any other children around to play with, because everyone's house in Valley Springs was miles apart. Fortunately, though, we lived just a block away from the Calaveras River. My dad would take me fishing, and my mom would take me to pick flowers and explore. My dad wallpapered for a living in Stockton. I was always sad when he left for work. We have always had a really good relationship, so I hated being away from him. My mom stayed at home with me, but when she, but she suffered from bipolar disorder. That was hard for me in some ways. She would go for months being depressed and mostly staying in her room, trying to sleep. Then she would be manic for a few months and go to bars to sing karaoke. She didn't drink or do drugs. She would just go kind of crazy sometimes. I don't really remember what she got mad about. I just remember her yelling and wanting me to clean the house. If she was fighting with my dad for whatever reason, she would go stay, he would go stay with his mom in Stockton, and then my mom wouldn't let me, wouldn't let him pick up, pick me up to get at him. I hated those times. Now that I'm older, though, I feel that my mom had a bad childhood, so I guess that's why she was crazy sometimes. I know she loves me a lot, though, and we have a great relationship now. My mom and dad told me that when I was 10, that they hadn't really been together for years, that they were just staying together to raise me. Good job. So thank you for the, we're grateful for this program. We believe in it. Thank you.
We have one more guest speaker and this is Amanda Funk and she's currently in the program and she has some words to give you guys also.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. My name is Amanda Funk. I am currently participating in the IDT Mental Health Court Program. I was so excited when Wendy invited me to speak today. This program has truly changed my life and it gives me pleasure to be able to talk about it with you today. First, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. One of the projects we have done was to write our life story and Wendy thought I should share that with you today. It's kind of long, so bear with me. I was born May 4th, 1986 in Stockton, California. My mom and dad had been together for 10 years. My mom had my two older sisters from a previous marriage that my dad helped raise. My mom had wanted a third child for a long time, but my dad thought he couldn't have children. Then finally, after 10 years of trying, I was finally born. We lived in Stockton for five years, then we moved to Valley Springs so I could go to better schools. My oldest sister, Chantella, stayed in Stockton and moved in with her grandma. So it was my mom, dad, sister, Dusty and I. At first, I was sad because there was no toys or us, there wasn't any other children around to play with because everyone's houses in Valley Springs was miles apart. Fortunately though, we lived just a block away from the Calaveras River. My dad would take me fishing and my mom would take me to pick flowers and explore. My dad wallpapered for a living in Stockton. I was always sad when he left for work. We have always had a really good relationship, so I hated being away from him. My mom stayed at home with me, but when she, but she suffered from bipolar disorder. That was hard for me in some ways. She would go for months being depressed and mostly staying in her room, trying to sleep. Then she would be manic for a few months and go to bars to sing karaoke. She didn't drink or do drugs. She would just go kind of crazy sometimes. I don't really remember what she got mad about. I just remember her yelling and wanting me to clean the house. If she was fighting with my dad, for whatever reason, she would go stay, he would go stay with his mom in Stockton. And then my mom wouldn't let me, wouldn't let him pick up, pick me up to get at him. I hated those times. Now that I'm older though, I feel that my mom had a bad childhood, so I guess that's why she was crazy sometimes. I know she loves me a lot though and we have a great relationship now. My mom and dad told me that when I was 10, that they hadn't really been together for years, that they were just staying together to raise me. I didn't want my dad to leave, but was happy that he was free from her because sometimes she would yell at him and he wasn't doing anything wrong. He started coming homeless until eventually just stayed living with his mom. We always kept in touch over the phone though and still have a great relationship today. My sister Dusty got pregnant and married when she was 17. I was excited thinking we were finally going to have a baby in the house because I always wanted a younger sibling to play with. Unfortunately though, my mom was mad about it and kicked her out. I still got to visit my sister and her husband and knew baby Alexa a lot and loved it. I spent a lot of time with my sister and their family growing up on trips, going to amusement parks and different things. I have four nieces and three nephews between the two of them. High school was a pretty, high school was a pretty fun time for me. Well, besides my freshman year, I started getting psoriasis and it covered 80% of my body and it took the doctors a year before my sister took me to a dermatologist that took a biopsy and found out what it was. And all I needed was to take a few prednisone and it was gone within weeks. Before that, they kept giving me different creams that never really helped. It was really embarrassing during that time because I looked like a freak, so I would wear long sleeves, even gloves in the summer to try and hide it and hated going to school or anywhere really. After my skin cleared up though, I didn't feel self-conscious about being overweight or having too pale of skin like I had before and I had the skin problem because I was just happy I wasn't covered in red splotches anymore. In high school, I focused mostly on art and loved going to school dances. I received a lot of awards for my art and sculpted out of clay a 3D replica of our school mascot, the profile of an Indian head, that I mounted on a wooden plaque that still stands outside the ceramic building. I also designed and painted with the help of a fellow student, Patrina Mansoon, a mural which featured eight major cities in Calaveras for Ed Lark, the director of our local TV station. We were filmed painting it, which they aired and mounted the mural onto the side of their storage container, which still hangs today behind Deo and San Andres. I also received best dancer in the yearbook in my senior year, which I was proud of because I never had the chance to take dance classes. After I graduated, I was pretty worried because I wasn't sure how I would ever be able to get a job because I lived out in the country and knew my mom wouldn't give me a ride to work. So how would I earn money for a car? Fortunately though, my mom's boyfriend surprised me with $2,500 to get a car. I couldn't believe it. I didn't know how to drive though. My sister and her husband took me car shopping and we found a 95 Chevy Cavalier for $2,800 and luckily, my sister paid the difference and taught me how to drive. So I took the driving test and got my license. My sister Chantella and her husband said I could stay with them in Stockton, so I just had to either work or go to school. My sister's friends said they were hiring a Tracy Volkswagen for a car salesman, so I went to an interview and got the job. It was really cool and at first, there were a few things I didn't like about it. After a while, I quit. I had a couple of jobs after that, then decided to go back to school. I attended Delta studying interior design for a while, but then decided that wasn't what I wanted to do. During this time, my sister and her husband, grandma, two children and I moved to Valley Springs. I worked at a few different places, then got a job at Radio Shack where I stayed for a while and became the manager. I also started going to school again, this time for child development, so I could become a preschool teacher. I also started my own business, planning children's parties and doing face painting. My business was actually going well until I broke up with a guy I was dating and needed a storage, but lost my ID. So a girl I had hired to work with me used her ID to, used her ID and later stole my stuff, including my party supplies, so I just gave up on that. I continued to go to school though and eventually started teaching. I have taught at a few different schools in Stockton for children's physical, emotional or mental disabilities and I have taught at the Bay School in Santa Cruz for children with autism and at a preschool, the Children's Center of San Lorenzo Valley. After teaching for a few years, I went back to school and attained my early childhood associate teaching certificate. Shortly after, the Butte Fire happened and I moved from Stockton to San Andres to help my friends and family who had been affecting, affected by the fire. Unfortunately, while helping them, I spent all the money I had been saving and then my car got stolen. After that, I decided I wanted to understand why so many of my friends were on drugs. I was 30 and I had never tried meth before. I just liked to smoke weed. So I tried it and at first, I didn't feel any different. I used for about three months, then decided it was dumb and quit for about six months. I was having a hard time being homeless though and couldn't seem to get help, so I figured, screw it, and started smoking again. It was like if I smoked with my friends, at least it was time I could be in a house and not outside. And since I had nowhere to sleep, it made it easier to keep going. After a year of this, I decided I didn't want to do it anymore. I learned a lot about it and why people do it, how people are when they do it and how I was on it and was done. I was still smoking like once a week. I was arrested for vandalism. The people at the park assumed I did it, I think because I had drawn a flower on the playhouse months before. The flower was pretty though, the graffiti some teenagers did with spray paint all over the ramp in the bathroom wall was gang-related and had word, had bad words, something I would never do. They also graffiti a sign at Habitat for Humanity, so I got two felonies for that. At first, it was unfortunate that I had been convicted of something I did not do, but I was still struggling with addiction and getting my life back on track. So in the end, it led to me getting the help that I needed. When I began the IDT, IDDT program, I first met with a counselor to set some goals and talk about things I was struggling with in my life. I didn't have a steady place to live, so I needed help with simple things like getting my laundry done and going grocery shopping. My case manager, Kirona, took me to the laundromat and paid to have all my clothes washed, dried and bought me a huge container of laundry soap and dryer sheets. We went to Deo and got some coffee to drink while we waited. This might sound insignificant, but it was a big deal and helped me and mattered a lot to me. I would have clean clothes so I could feel good about myself and make it two appointments I had. I, I was, it was also nice to be able to get help from someone who wasn't expecting some kind of favor in return, which I had encountered a lot. One of the goals I wanted to accomplish was to paint another mural in town. I had painted one in 2004 and thought it would be a good way to get back to my roots, feel accomplished again and give back to my community. My counselor, Megan, received approval that I could paint a mural on one of the walls in the group room at the annex where I attended group therapy once a week. Kirona then took me to purchase paint and supplies and I got to work. After about six months, we had an unveiling party with the other members in group and Kirona, Wendy and Laurel. My mural was finally finished and I would forever be a part of the annex. I felt great to finish something I had started and be productive again. I think IDDT is a great program because instead of feeling punished, I feel like I have gained a support group and when I need help, they are there for me. I've learned there are many reasons why people turn to drugs, but that I shouldn't be ashamed of being weak, instead realize there was something lacking in my life and I just needed a little help getting back on track. Besides learning about the causes of drug abuse and mental illness, some of my favorite parts of IDDT is the fun activities we do. We have gone bowling together, played frisbee golf and played pictionary and charades, which I think is a very important part of the recovery because it shows you fun social activities that don't involve drugs. Something else significant I received help with was when I got a job, Kirona took me out clothes shopping. I was so appreciative so I could feel confident at work. I now work at Sierra Energy in San Andres and live with my boyfriend in town. I have been clean for over a year and will soon be finishing Mental Health Court. I am proud to be among the first to have completed the program and hope to encourage furtherment of this program to help others because I know that it works. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for sharing all of that and thank you for all the work that we do. A lot of people don't realize all the different tasks that the county does. We tend to focus on certain things and we forget that there's just all this great work happening in our community. So I'd like to call for a motion.
So move.
Moved by Supervisor Callaway.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Toffinelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Now, therefore be it proclaimed, the County of Calaveras Board of Supervisors proclaims the month of May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the County of Calaveras and recommits our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness, reducing stigma and discrimination and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all the people with mental illness. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras on this 14th day of May 2019. Thank you so much and please come on up and accept it, all of you graduates and voters.
I just don't understand. I'm gonna take a picture. Okay, all right, all right. Are you still with Bob? Sure. Okay. Yeah. You don't have to. You go. No, you go. Okay, I'll go. Okay, one more.
Thank you. Thank you. We already did public comment, Marty. Yeah, that's what that was. Marty, we're gonna have general public comment. I'll let you say a couple of things. All right. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming and a lot of courage there. Thank you.
Item made is from Public Works to proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th, 2019 as National Public Works Week in Calaveras County.
All right, Josh, that's a hard show to follow. And actually, do you want to, why don't we do, Ben will start the proclamation and you can do your presentation.
This one, this one really touches the base that we talk about a lot. There's so much, the staff, management, all the way to the head that does for accounting. It takes every one of these individuals in Public Works to get things done, so I'll start off with that. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Calaveras County. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in Calaveras County to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective, respective communities. And whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore.
Oh. Nope. Public comment. Mr. Pack.
Good morning, Chair Guiramendi and members of the board. My name is Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works and Transportation and we're asking you to proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th as National Public Works Week here in Calaveras County. So Public Works is one of our largest departments here in Calaveras County. There's a number of different divisions, including road maintenance, engineering, fleet services, business administration and administration. The county is also responsible for a number of important programs, including the capital improvement program, the county surveyor, our stormwater permitting program and a large number of county service areas, permanent road divisions, lighting districts and traffic mitigation fee programs. We feel we have more interaction on a day-in, day-out basis with the larger population than any other department. Our folks drive our roads. We hear a lot from our folks that drive our roads and we think some of the programs we do help save lives, whether it's safety projects on important infrastructure or whether it's responding timely to an emergency. The work we perform can be engaging and critical to the community, from responding during these snowstorms and flood events to helping replacing aging bridges and other infrastructure. And I think most importantly, we get to live our childhood dream. As kids, we played with Legos, erector sets, we, and then we got to drive our tonka trucks around in the backyard and today, we get to drive those same tonka trucks. We get to build, you know, important infrastructure. It's pretty cool. It's a cool job to have. I want to highlight in particular the efforts over the winter. We had a historic 2019 season shortly after a historic 2017 season. Hopefully that pattern doesn't continue, but with that, a lot of stuff that our residents don't know, our road crews were on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week for more than a month. There was a lot of overtime. There was a lot of fray nerves. The support to road maintenance was critical from our mechanics who had to be out there to service our equipment that was desperately needed to, to keep roads open, whether it was our engineering support services, our administrators helping to procure the contracts to coordinate with both FEMA, FHWA, Caltrans and our regional partners in the emergency declaration efforts. This was a team effort. I'm proud of our team. I'm proud of the work we've done, the work we continue to do. And this is our opportunity in May here, the week of 19th through 25th, to step back, reflect on the work we've done over the past year and to say thank you for all of the hard work that our men and women have done each and every year. And so with that said, I'm asking that the board proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th as National Public Works Week and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll perform a motion for the board.
I'll move.
I think all of us would so.
Who is first?
I'll move it.
Moved by Supervisor Toffinelli.
Speak. Speak.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Callaway. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Supervisor Toffinelli.
Now, therefore be it proclaimed, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors hereby designate the week, May 19th through 25th, 2019 as National Public Works Week and be it further proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety and quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, you want to come up and get the proclamation?
I think all of us have Public Works on speed dial.
Certainly do.
Thank goodness.
Thank everything, all the crew. Thank you very much, Josh. All right. Moving forward. Madam Clerk, public comment.
General Public
Are there any public comments, items that are not on the agenda? So if it's on the agenda, wait for that item to be called. Sir?
Good morning. My name is Timbaloflin. I have a handout for you first. I am Special Water Counsel for the Oakdale and South San Juanquin irrigation districts, Tridam Projects. I've represented the entities for over 30 years on all matters related to water concerning the Stanislaus River. I'm... Handout to you, and I've already talked to Supervisor Mills prior to the meeting here today. We've heard requests in... About raising the water surface elevation at Lake Tullock on a year-round basis. That causes Oakdale and South San Juanquin and Tridam much concern, given current operations at New Maloney's and downstream. We have valuable assets at Tullock and at Goodwin Dam down below that we need to protect. So I think what we need to do, and I've already talked to Supervisor Mr. Mills about this, is open up a dialogue to talk about what it is that this petition entails, what it is that the Calaveras County is trying to accomplish at Tullock. We've been partners on the lake for quite some time, but this one in particular caused us concern. The district's asked me to come up and speak to you today. I've spoken with Supervisor Mills. We're gonna set up a meeting in June to talk about that, but we're much concerned that we don't want to see a movement to raise the lakes at Tullock on a year-round basis that's gonna cause us problems in our operations downstream, as well as with the Army Corps of Engineers, our FERC license. And quite frankly, and most of you already know this, we're kind of in the battle of our lives right now. We have the Water Quality Control Plan Phase One going forward. We're in litigation, both in federal and state court on that. We also have the OCAP biological opinions that our federal government at New Maloney's is going to be doing. That will be headed to litigation probably this year as well, as well as a host of other things that are on the river. So we'd like to take a breath, and maybe if there are issues and concerns regarding Tullock, talk about those, develop those, but immediately right now, we're right in the midst of, as you've probably been reading in your papers, this ongoing water litigation war, fight, whatever you wanna call it, and so our assets are a little bit thin to be devoting times to an issue like this, but we are concerned, and we will, we do look forward to working with you and others on this issue, and other issues regarding Tullock, because we're very concerned that our operations and how we run Tullock fits in with what the county needs are in regards to recreation, water surface elevations, and those other types of issues. So if you have any questions...
Thank you very much.
Perfect timing.[839.82][839.82](laughter)
Next speaker. Marty?
Morning, Marty Crane. So what we just heard is a planning issue, something that we have been focused on for many years here in Calaveras County in our general plan update. So the general plan update is moving right along, and the clock is ticking, so I encourage everyone to please go to calaverascap.org, and where you will find all the documents over the last 12 years. This is a group that... It's the only group that's been front and center and have all the documents over on this plan for the last 12 years, and so I encourage you to please go there. We, the people, we, the taxpayers, paid over $900,000 for the minted-harnished general plan update document, which has never been released to the public, to the Planning Commission, or to the Board of Supervisors. So before we get to the last minute here, which we're almost there, where we have to approve an updated general plan, which has no viable alternative to consider, which is a requirement, I'm begging you, please, to release the minted-harnished report. A long time ago, I... On a couple occasions, I brought this up at the Planning Commission and was told by the Planning Director that, oh, well, all of the community plans are folded right into... Because I was asking about the community plans, which are the voice of the public, which is another requirement of a planning document, he said that they're all, all those are just folded right into the plan, but those can be amended by anybody, by... At any time during, a number of times throughout the year. So that means that the first time you amend it, the voice of the public is changed. Second time you amend it, it's gone. And then also, about a week later, I was at the Board of Supervisors, and I mentioned it again, and county council at that time said, oh, the minted-harnished report is every bit like the general plan that we have now. So it's either just like the general plan we have now draft, or it bears no resemblance. You can't have it both ways. So please release the minted-harnished report to the public, to yourselves, to the Planning Commission, and the clock is ticking. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Speaker? Al, Patricia? Al, you're closer.
But she's a lady.
Either way, clock's starting, guys.
Alright. House of Labor Taxpayer Association. This week is also National Police Week, in which we have an opportunity to memorialize those that lost their lives in defending our communities. But the main purpose of this is this little booklet called, You Know the Constitution and Fascinating Facts About It. The little booklet is just packed with information, even the top 20 Supreme Court decisions. We all know about one of them, but what about the other 19? Anyway, our plan with the Taxpayer Association is to see if we can get this studied by perhaps 1,000 kids, that's seniors and juniors in high school, and in order to do that, we need to... We'll have a quiz, a 10-question quiz, and then fabulous prizes. Now, if these prizes are fabulous enough, then we might reach our goal of having 20 kids study the Constitution. Just think about that. What effect this would have in the future, especially of the degree of wisdom of future voters. Man, it's just incredible. Well, in order to get really fabulous prizes, we need to get money, and I was hoping that I'd be able to find a millionaire that loved our country and would come up with $10,000 right now. Well, he's not successful, and the reason why they're millionaires is that they're careful in what they do with their money, I guess. So what we'd like to propose is that those people who would like to donate to... For these prizes, we would memorialize your name with the prize. In other words, this is donated by Mr. Smith, $3,000, and who... Few words about the sponsor. By giving personal recognition, perhaps we would be able to reach our $10,000 goal. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Al. Patricia? I'm... Let's get the next one.
I am very disappointed about the way things have gone the last month or so, as far as pot is concerned, and I think that the mental health presentation was very poignant in that they brought out that drugs get involved when people try to solve their problems, and they reach out to that, and it is a dead end to a very deep pit. And it isn't just the people that are using the drugs, it's the people that live around the people that use the drugs. People lose their sense of right and wrong, and they aren't trustworthy with your... Whatever it is you might have, and for instance, one lady said her car was stolen. That's what happens, and it makes me feel very sad that Calaveras County is participating in an industry that makes this more available to people that are looking for solutions to their problems and end up getting... Taken over by these drugs. And so, when I was a kid, I grew up on a ranch out in the boonies, and 17 miles from no place, and we had to go home and do chores, and one of the things we did was milk cows, and then we fed the calves, cleaned out the stalls. That was part of our chores before we went in and helped our mom get dinner. And I found that when we put the milk into the refrigerator, the cream rose to the top, and the truth will rise to the top. Unfortunately, it won't be in time for a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil, how many other speakers do we have? Okay, Neil, you'll be our last.
Good morning. I wanted to make everyone aware that the CDFAs has issued regulations on what registration applications should look for, should look like, for growers and breeders of hemp. The potential nuisance argument is flawed, and in the capital right now, SB 527 will establish that cannabis and hemp are agricultural designation under the Williamson Act, and this is a right to farm county, and manufacturing is a goal of the Economic Development Office. Failing to end this moratorium will be missing a major opportunity. There are new industries such as hard hemp flooring, held together by soy glue, has no volatile organic compounds, and couldn't be a safer alternative to the formaldehyde and other flooring that exists, and even Levi's is incorporating it into their genes, making this all public, because the rest of the world is accepting this industry, and even foreign countries are being allowed to export their genetics into the country because there's a lack of established seed supply that is properly certified. Forbes projects CBD market to be $16 billion by 2025, and really normalization is what we need. To be hidden out of sight and out of mind because it is not the proper way to go forward because it only perpetuates the division in this county. We've been treated like second-class farmers and business owners, and bridging this gap will help heal the wounds of the past two years, encouraging public acceptance of what a significant contribution the community and to the economy that we make would go a long way. Please facilitate this by dropping the moratorium and let us get a foothold in a market while it is young and margins are still worth it. And on a side note, I'd like to make sure everyone knows that yesterday, a California couple was awarded $2 billion for the cancer by... Bayer Monsanto has to pay because of the cancer that they have from using glyphosate, and it's just something to consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public comment, and we're gonna take a 10-minute break till we... Before we start on the regular agenda.
And I think, I think you should take the resolution away from him unless he jumps.
Supervisor Callaway, I'm sure that our Director of Public Works intends to jump a frog today.
No, I think I'm gonna make him my pinch jumper.
Don't be kicking his can. We... Let's get on. We've got a 11:30 break. Let's move to this agenda. Madam Clerk?
Consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Board members. Supervisor Mills?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 28. I will be recusing myself for that particular item.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I will pull item number 27, and I also will be recusing myself from that item.
Supervisor Callaway? Nope.
No, why do you have to recuse yourself?
When we get back to it, I'll explain.
Okay. So can I have a motion? Excuse me. Are there members of the public who wish to pull an item? Seeing none. We will... Is there a motion for the remaining?
I will move the remaining.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. I'll start with item 27.
Item 27 is from the Administrative Office to adopt a resolution making a finding of substantial public benefit and waiving certain fees for the resource connection.
Mr. Moss?
Good morning. Brian Moss, Administrative Office. This item is, as stated, is the resolution finding a substantial public benefit for the waiver of certain fees, in this case, building department fees, for construction of a cover, a shade cover, if you will, for the resource connection. This is something that the West Calaveras Rotary Club had generously offered to build for the resource connection, and this is for the Calaveras Children's Advocacy Center. The structure will allow children and families assessing the services at the center to utilize the outside patio during the summer months, and this is really good timing to get that shade structure up, because we're just now moving into that time of year. So, again, our recommendation that it is indeed a public benefit for the community and for those using the facility. So I just would state that that would be the summary of this item.
Thank you very much. Board discussion?
Mr. Chair, I will be recusing myself from this item simply because I am a president of the West Calaveras Rotary's Charities Foundation, who is paying for this, and if it does not pass, then we will be paying the fees. So I will recuse myself at this time.
Supervisor Stopper?
When you just brought up, you brought up the building permit fees, Mr. Moss, is that included in this is the waiving of the planning fees from the planning department also?
Was not aware of any planning fees on this.
It is... This is in the planning PD zone. This is brought forward to Peter originally, so for this to be done, the planning fees need to be part of this, because this is a donation by a nonprofit, West Rotary, to help a children's crisis center, and for the small amount that they're donating, the planning fees do need to be part of this.
Do we know what those planning fees were?
Three, about $3,000.
Thank you. This is the first I've heard of this. Thank you.
I originally brought it forward to Peter Moore, and then it went on to building... I originally brought it forward to Peter Moore, and then it went on to building at the same time, so both these should be together.
If I, if I could suggest, that sounds like an awful lot. I would like to hear more about that. That's already been paid or has not been?
It has not been paid. It's, so, what it is, is the West Rotary is donating a shaded roof for a children's crisis center so the kids, when they're having an issue, have a shaded area during the summer. That costs $1,900. And because it's in planned development, there is a planning fee that, that isn't stated because of anything being done in, within a planned development area.
Supervisor Calaway?
It doesn't sound like this would be something that would require the PD review. I could ask Counsel, because she is on the attorney for the planning department-wise.
I am not aware of the project. I would have to look at it. I don't know off the top of my head whether this would be subject.
Can I suggest that perhaps we table this till later on in the meeting and give you an hour or so to talk to Peter and figure out what's...
Peter's not attached.
Okay.
May I make, may I make a recommendation?
Please.
And that is, as you'll see by the resolution, that the Board of Supervisors has the authority to waive, obviously, the local fees under their jurisdiction. We don't have the authority to, to waive other fees that are outside of our jurisdiction. What I would simply recommend is that because of the, because of the resolution, I would just modify that to state, resolution making a finding of substantial benefit and waiving certain fees in, for the Resource Connection. And that's, that's how, I'd probably do that. Take the 800 out for the building department, not worry about the amount for planning at this point, unless planning has an issue with that. But really, it's up to the Board to waive those fees, and I would just make it a simpler, simpler item.
I, I would concur with what Brian said and have the, the item amended as he's stated.
Okay. Hold that thought, let's do public comment, and then we'll come back and call this up. Madam Counsel, is there something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to take a look at how this was agendized. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned that if we extend it, that we might need to bring it back.
Bring it back.
If we're extending the amount that's in the resolution or waiving additional fees beyond what's in the resolution.
But what we're doing is modifying it. The resolution, we're not taking, we're not changing the dollar amount, we're just modifying the...
We're taking out the dollar amount.
We're taking out the dollar amount.
Okay, it's not going to have a dollar amount.
It's not going to have a dollar amount. So, we're just saying we're waiving it.
Is there public comment on this item?
Hi, my name is Francisco De La Cruz. I'm a member of the West Calaveras Rotary, and I've been assigned the project to get this to happen. I've been working on it since March. And originally, I was told that there was a PRD, something, design review. I was originally told it was a $3,600 fee. When I pushed back on that, I was told, no, that really doesn't apply because it's not in the division, it's not in the subdivision, it's public property, it's owned by the Mental Health District, I believe. And so, I've been operating under the assumption that the only fees that we had to come up with were the building permits. And I was originally told it was $800. This morning, I went there again, and they said, well, maybe more, like $560. So, I don't really know which way it's going to go. But I've been working on this since March to get it on this agenda. And I don't know how long it's, it's going to take to, to resolve a question of 3,600 or 500 or what have you. But to satisfy any curiosity, we're talking about a metal structure similar to a carport that's going up in a corner of a building. It's not going to modify anything, it's not going to add to the, the structure itself, it's going to be self-supporting, self-standing, et cetera. So, I'm not real sure what other rules may come up, but I had already pursued the $3,600 thing and told, was told that it did not apply. So, that's what I'm operating on.
Thank you very much, Francisco. Other public comment? Ma'am?
Good morning. My name is Kelly Cohen. I'm the director for the Resource Connection Calaveras Children's Advocacy Center, which is the program we're talking about. It is a nonprofit program that serves child victims of crime. And just to clarify, the building is owned by the Mark Twain Healthcare District. We rent it from them. They're building that clinic on the corner, and it's the house above it. So, it's actually not in the housing development. And I, I was told the same thing as Mr. De La Cruz, is that that, that fee did not apply because we weren't in there.
Thank you. Ms. Court?
I do not understand why, when an individual or a group of people get together to try to help something, and then it's hurdle after hurdle, red tape, without any end, I just don't understand why people make it difficult. When children, whatever, whether they're healthy or not, they need to have shade, and they need to be outdoors, and it's, it's a healthy thing. And by making shade, it's making it healthy for those children. And I don't see, making it difficult at this point, why anybody would put a block to it.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, we will close public comment, bring it back to the Board. Just Madam Counsel.
I, I, looking at the way it was agendized, I think this item is agendized broadly enough that we could remove, it just is waiving certain fees, it doesn't commit to an amount. So, I don't think we can determine today what planning permits are required, et cetera. So, but I do think if the Board wanted to, it could change the resolution based on the way this was agendized.
But we don't need to recover the cost. If there are planning things, that's covered by this resolution.
I think that the, it could be modified to include that. I don't know the total amount of permit fees, but because the resolution is limited to $800, if the Board wanted to change that amount and bring it back, or if Brian wanted to bring it back with a changed amount, the Board could adopt a more flexible resolution.
Can we adopt a more flexible resolution at this time?
Yes.
Okay, great.
We can do that now, right?
Yes.
I would just, I would just reiterate and state again, oh, I'm sorry, that if you just, if you eliminate in the amount of 800, if you eliminate that, because the body of the resolution does not cite a number, so I think you would be okay there.
Want to make a motion?
I, I would like to make a motion amended as suggested by Mr. Moss in County Council.
As removing the, in the...
To waive, just waive the fees.
Okay. Sir, second?
Second.
Second, moved by Supervisor Stoppers, second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0. Supervisor Toffenelli abstaining. Somebody please go get Gary, you know.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kermedi, I'm sorry to interrupt again. I just want to, as, as the CAO just pointed out, there's a statement in the resolution that says, be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby waives the building permit application, review, and inspection fees. I want to ensure that this is going to be not limited, that's just the building permit. We might want to say planning fees or add that to that section.
Can we just make it certain? Or just omit the building part, so they're just fees.
Okay. Gary, you want to step out and we can, all of us are in affirmation, so if somebody wants to reconsider motion?
Can't we just say certain fees?
Certain, certain fees, certain county fees related to the approval.
Exactly. That was my intent of the motion.
So, do we need to rescind the last motion, or you just need to modify? Modify? Do we need to counsel?
Making it consistent with what the title is going to be.
I mean, I, I think, sure, why don't we reconsider it?
Okay, so do we need to counsel the last one and then?
Yes.
Move forward?
Uh, move to reconsider.
I'll second. Move to reconsider by Supervisor Stoppers, second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-1 abstention?
No, are we going to redo?
Yes.
We're going to redo it. So, is there a new motion?
I'll, I'll move the dollar amount out, omit the building department piece within the resolution, just so that it says fees.
And then I, I would recommend saying, be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby waive certain fees related to the approval, that the county may collect on behalf of state or other agents, okay, I'm sorry, purposes of the, approval of, of a shade structure, approval and building. How do you want to say it?
As said.
Okay. Certain fees related to the approval and building of a shade structure at the Resource Connection Calaveras Children's Advocacy Center.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor, as stated, moved by Supervisor Stoppers, second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 28.
Are we sure?
We're sure. We got it all cleared up here.
Item 28 is from the Administrative Office to adopt a resolution making a finding of substantial public benefit and waiving certain fees for the Camp Nine cleanup project.
Supervisor Mills? With that, Chair, because I'm the one that brought this forward on behalf of the community of Alacito, I'll recuse myself to just... No, I'm not, I have nothing to lose, but I just don't want the appearance that there might be something I'm going to gain, so I'll step out for me. Okay.
Dennis, there is none.
It's all right, we'll get her done. 28, Mr. Moss.
Good morning. This is similar to the last, the last item. Once again, this one is actually for the disposal of mainly white goods. Some of you have visited Camp Nine Road, both Lehigh property, Lehigh, former Calaveras Cement, Lehigh Heidelberg, also BLM property is an area where there's a lot of debris that is taken out in that area and people use it for target practice. It generally is white goods, meaning refrigerators, washers, dryers, that kind of thing. There's obviously a lot of brass out there as well. There are, there's a burned down mobile trailer. We have about four cars out there, we have a truck topper out there as well. Lot of items out there. It's an, it's obviously an attractive nuisance, it's blight. Supervisor Mills approached me and stated, as part of IWM, that that's an issue they like to clean up. He has volunteers that are willing to actually do that cleanup. As part of that cleanup, obviously, we have a charge at Red Hill Annex. And that's the point of this, this resolution is to waive any IWM fees, whether it be anything being, being brought into Rock Creek, Solis facility, or the Red Hill Annex.
Thank you very much. Questions from the Board?
Yeah.
Supervisor Calaway?
We used to clean up Camp Nine before. I mean, we'd even send Public Works trucks down to, and we never ever charged to take all that stuff down in the gullies at Camp Nine. Are we, is this new policy?
You know...
That we're starting to do it now?
I'm not, I'm not aware of what was done in the past under IWM. I just know that in order for, for people to bring in, our set policy and Board adopted fees are that we charge X amount of dollars per white good.
So, when trash like this would come off of Forest Service lands or BLM lands, the county never charged before?
Again, I...
So, I mean, I guess I was trying, I didn't know if this was a new policy on behalf of the Board to...
Well, by, by, by the, by what I see on the books, Board adopted fees would be charged no matter what. And because this is, this is something that's coming off of BLM, coming off of Heidelberg, and it's really not so much about those issues, it's more about the fact that they're white goods, the community's picking it up, we didn't want to charge the community for actually hauling it and then certainly disposing of it.
So, if Public Works picked it up, we wouldn't charge, but if the community picks it up, we do charge?
Well, the, the Public Works is responsible for the public roads, as you know. We don't charge for that, you are correct.
No.
This is more on the, this is more off of the, off of the roads. If it was on the roads, absolutely not.
I know it is, and we've done it several times over the years. I just, sorry, never mind. It's fine.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, and Marina, you're correct, but, and I think you were thinking back to when it was all over the side of the road down the gully, and we were cleaning it out and cleaning it up. And we, we had that discussion at the time. I don't think we did anything policy-wise different, because at the same time of that era, we were, we were beginning to charge $25 per appliance, and there was a big... But we cleaned that area up once several years ago, and there was no charge because Public Works at the time was doing the work and hauling it off to the landfill, so...
And some of you may recall, the Mitchell Mill Cleanup, which was up in the Willseyville area, and of course, we'd written a grant for that at the time that paid for all costs. Now, whether some of that went towards IWM disposal costs, I can't say, but, yeah.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the community? Seeing none, bring it back to the Board. Is there further discussion or any motion?
I'll, I'll move this item. Well, wait a second, hold on a minute, I don't know, is the amount correct on the bottom, is, do we have, do we need to take that out?
I, I don't have it up in front of me, because, anybody have any concerns?
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Supervisor Stoppers, second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One abstention, Supervisor Mills abstaining. Gary, could you please tell Dennis to come back in?
He was recused, he was not abstained.
Excuse me, recused.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, guys, we have 55 minutes. Go. Go.
Item 29 is from the Sheriff's Office to accept donations from Calaveras County Search and Rescue Team totaling $41,284.77, and authorize the auditor controller to include these items on the Sheriff's Office capital asset inventory, and from Barry Mackler totaling $1,147.81, and recognize these donors for their continued support of the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office.
Under Sheriff Macedo.
Good morning. I'm going to do the donation for, from Mr. Mackler first, because we have two representatives from Search and Rescue here that I'll introduce in just, just a moment. Mr. Mackler unfortunately could not be here today, but he did donate the material and labors to redo the carpet in the Arnold Sheriff Substation. It deteriorated quite a bit. He, Mr. Mackler was one of our sheriff's volunteers for a period of time, but work has taken him back and forth to the Bay Area more frequently, which is a reason he, he is not here today. So, I'd like to personally thank him and recognize him for his service to, to the community and specifically redoing the floors to, to the substation. So, that would be donor number two. Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Chuck Hillis and the President of the Calaveras County Search and Rescue Team, Don Dornell, if you guys would like to come up. The Calaveras County Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue Team is donating a side-by-side ATV and a trailer. As you know, the Search and Rescue Team helps out with a search and rescue operations throughout the county. We also assist other agencies throughout the state of California when they're, when they are in need. And if I could just add something, I think most of the Board is aware of this, but I'm not quite sure how, how well aware most of the public is. This county has a lot to offer, the land, the landscape, the beauty of this, this county is something you see driving through every day. However, these small groups that support community functions, and this Search and Rescue Group is one of them, they're made up of incredibly unique individuals with very impressive backgrounds. Two of the gentlemen that are here with me today are representative of both of the, both of that, or those descriptions. The Search and Rescue Team not only recovers loved ones that have, that have been lost and are found alive, but they also support us in recovering those that have deceased. So, their, their volunteerism and their, their actions are invaluable to us. And in certain occasions, their actions are actually heroic in saving the lives of others, both citizens of Calaveras County and visitors who, who get lost. So, I will turn, turn this over to them, and I just want to make... So I will turn, turn this over to them, and I just want to make sure I thank both of them. And I would be remiss if I didn't note that the Sheriff apologizes for not being here today. He was booked and our two search and rescue coordinators are actually out working on a crime scene right now, so I'm feeling in for, for the three of them in handling this board matter. Thank you.
That's the Under Sheriff.
Yes, it is.
Well, thank you, Under Sheriff, for that, that introduction. Mr. Chair and the Board, my name's Don Dornell. I am the current President and Chairman of the Board of Directors of the Calaveras Search and Rescue Team. With me today is Chuck Hillis, who's also a member of our Board of Directors. Mr. Hillis and his wife Donna have been longtime members and support personnel for our team. We are a group of about 30 volunteers from throughout the county, but also residents outside of our county, or sometimes weekend visitors who belong to our team. I want to thank the Board for this consideration of this item, but I also want to recognize that we wouldn't even be here today without the support of the Winter Creek Foundation, who provided the Calaveras County Search and Rescue Team with a $100,000 grant in 2018. The Board then, we had targeted a number of items, our wish list, but then the Board did our due diligence and we went through a bid process and we purchased a Polaris Ranger, which is a off-road side-by-side vehicle. This vehicle will allow, allow the team to utilize our resources more effectively and actually be able to move personnel and equipment in and out of the field more efficiently. We also purchased a trailer, or are purchasing a trailer, for the transport of that vehicle from our cache, which is at the maintenance yard in Arnold, anywhere in the county. We have chosen to donate that to the Sheriff's Office to be part of their rolling stock inventory, but we'll be using that for search and rescue purposes. The SAR team volunteers give a lot of their time and effort, they bring a lot of expertise to, to the county. This will allow us to be more effective and efficient in what we're doing. I don't, I'd also like to acknowledge Lieutenant Sturm and Sergeant Stark, who could not be here today, who have been very supportive and I'd say very effective leaders through the Sheriff's Office in coordinating a unique collaborative effort between volunteers and sworn personnel. We've been able to grow the team and we continue to search for ways to grow the team. So part of this is I'd like to encourage anybody who wants to volunteer to reach out to us and they can contact us through Calaveras County SAR, Calaveras SAR, not County, calaverasar.org. That's our website. Reach out to us, we'll invoke you to a meeting. We meet once a month. Volunteers give about three hours a month to attend a business meeting and we have a short training period. And then one weekend a month, usually it's a 20, sorry, a one-day event where we actually get out in the field and do training. We just did some rope rescue training this past weekend. We also work with our neighboring counties on mutual aid. We sent people to the Paradise Fire last year to assist with the search for victims. We assist Alpine County quite a bit, especially since they are actually blocked off during the winter from access from the rest of their county. We provide a lot of assistance up to Bear Valley. So we, we appreciate the support of, of the Board in this, but we also greatly appreciate the support of the Sheriff's Office in, in working together to accomplish our mission, which I might want to put out, is to aid the lost, injured and imperiled. Very brief, but it says a lot about what we try to do. Do you have anything to say, John?
I'd just like to thank the Board for their continued support, because we'll be probably working with you in the future also.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Board, I want to thank you for volunteer activities a great deal. And it's wonderful how you contribute to your community and it's much appreciated. It's a force multiplier with our Sheriff's Office and in our community. Any comments from the Board?
Just say hi to Donna.
Other, other, other public comment on this? Seeing none? Fair enough, Marty. Usually we don't do clapping, but we'll let that one go. Very true, very true. Bring it back to the Board for discussion or motion.
Chair, would you like to move the item?
I'll second.
Moved by Supervisor Mills, second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you both very, very much. It's Frog Jump, we could have-
What the heck?
What the heck. We are now recessing as the Board of Supervisors, reconvening as the Air Pollution Control District.
Item 30 is from the Air Pollution Control District to approve a budget transfer of air pollution control district funds from contingencies. This action requires a four-fifths affirmative vote of the Board.
Good morning, I'm Doug Carson, I'm with Calaveras County Air Pollution, and I'm speaking in place of Brad Banner, he's out of town. This is a simple transfer for the budget. There was a calculation error in putting together salaries, and so we need to readjust the budget to be able to deal with that. It's that simple.
Any questions from the Board? Supervisor Mills? Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for the Board for a motion.
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stoppa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We are now adjourning to Air Pollution Control District and reconvening as the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Doug.
Item 31 is from Animal Services to hold an appeal hearing and grant a variance from the financial gain requirement of County Code Section 6.18.040 so that Calaveras Humane Society may obtain a commercial kennel license from the Department of Animal Services.
Good morning, Board. My name's Evan Jacobs, I am the Manager of Calaveras County Animal Services, and we are here today asking for a variance specifically for the commercial license holder/operator in part where the primary purpose of such activity is for financial gain. Humane Society is a nonprofit, they're a 501(c)(3), we only have two permits, a private kennel license and a commercial kennel license, and they do not fit in either one.
That's kind, that's kind of interesting that I, I was sort of, that because they can't make money, we have to create a variance, that seems like almost an oxymoron. But, yeah, thank you, and thank you for your support and recommendation on this, Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board?
Yeah, I would like to thank you for your support for this too, I think it's very important and-
Yes.
Thank you.
Nice to have you.
And I understand the reason for the denial because of what you just brought up. So now it has to come to, to the Board for us to give the variance for it.
Correct, and, and I'm working with, with County Council in getting a third permit process that we'll bring to you at a later date to, to make sure that, and if another facility would like to open like this, there's that opportunity.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Stoppa? Nope. Public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board.
I'd like to move this item.
I would like to second this item.
Moved by Supervisor Callaway, second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. All right.
Supervisor announcements. In compliance with AB 1234, chaptered as Government Code Section 53232.3D, Board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, such as mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the Board members' discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
Supervisor Toffenelli, you want to start today?
I have nothing that I cost the county that I did. I did go to several meetings, but did not charge the county, so.
Supervisor Stoppa?
I've been to quite a few, quite a few meetings, including a COG meeting while some of other people attended a dinner. But, you know, there, there is something I would like to pull the Board on when it comes to our landfill and possibly having a study session on having a peak power plant that would, that's being proposed to us. There is a group that did, did a proposal, and there's a couple of other groups that are doing proposals on, on that peak power plant, and I think that this could be a benefit to the people in the county. And they said that they could put together a, a study session and, and they could probably get it into about half an hour, so it's not one of our marathon study sessions. But it would be something to educate the Board and then we can make an educated decision on it, whether or not it's something we are willing to move forward on into the future.
So you want the presentation reviewed by staff on the peak power plant concept?
Yes.
Correct? CIO, do you want to weigh in on this?
No, actually, I think it's a good idea, I've been briefed by-
Can you turn your mic to Mark? I'm sorry. I-
Look the red light. There you go.
No, I agree, I think it's a good topic. It's, as I've suggested before, it's a good opportunity for us to look at alternate revenue sources, and this is one that would be a sustainable effort as well, so I-
Staff has the bandwidth to get her done?
Absolutely.
Okay, so is there a, there's a poll before the Board to have a presentation on peak power plant by integrated waste management? Where's everybody at? Supervisor Toffenelli?
Sure. I'm a yes.
Obviously?
Yes.
Having been through this before several times, there's, I think, questions that need to be resolved, including those people who are proposing it and the impact, remember Supervisor Spellman brought this up, and I can't remember, did you bring it up before, Gary?
I believe so.
Yeah, it's been for a while.
I mean, it's sort of a cycling on, cycling off issue, and I would just caution that having been from the utility industry, there's, there's a little bit more to it, so, I mean, I guess I would, I'm not, not supportive, but I think I would like maybe Mr. Stoppa and Mr. Alt to kind of talk about it before it comes back to the Board.
Absolutely. That's what a study session's for, to address these issues.
So we'll, we'll actually integrate this into either a meeting or a separate date within how much time, but as soon as that's ready, sounds good? Put it on the agenda.
Okay.
That's clear.
So I'm uncertain if Supervisor Callaway said yes she was in favor or no she was not.
Yes.
Thank you.
I was unclear, too.
Supervisor Stoppa, anything else?
Um, no.
I'll be fine with that.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, I've had two meetings with the Eastern Siam, a King Row and our Basin Authority in the last three weeks. They're coming down to the close for their delivery of their plan in January 2020, and I've asked for the Eastside GSA to gather up together in a meeting as to how we would work going forward with, do we need to modify the MOU? Do we need to change who is going to be doing what as part of our responsibility? But I think that as soon as the Eastside can sit down and decide what that looks like, then they need to bring it before the various agencies, boards, like this one, so we can have a chance to review it before we get to January, to where we have to start implementing the plan, that we, we have an opportunity to decide how we want to implement it, what parts we want to play in it. So that's going to have to be in this next six months of having those conversations, not only with the Eastside GSA, but also with this Board. So we, and we decide what we want to do and how we want to get it done. Also, Chamber of Commerce, good morning, Calaveras was a really good meeting, and then the fair kickoff dinner, of course.
I don't know if it's great.
Yeah, hot copper car show, almost 300 cars there last Saturday, a great event, and I look forward to the one that's coming up in Murphy's next, this, next weekend after this one, so just kind of keep that in mind. Calaveras County Fly-In at the airport was well-attended Friday before last, and looking forward to having another one of those next year. Rides, $20 a head at that, and they could not get them all in. So it was a really great event. Yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Supervisor Callaway?
I'll be at the fair volunteering most of the week. I have Central Sierra Child Support, LAFCO meeting. I am having a meeting with PG&E regarding their aggressive tree removal program. So if there's one other supervisor who would like to meet if that's an issue in your district, please let me know. I'll be going to the Senior Awards Luncheon on the 21st. And I do have a question about this, Dennis, that this gentleman that came and spoke-
You'd have to do it offline.
I have to talk about it offline?
With me personally.
I do?
Otherwise, it's an agenda item.
Marina, Central Sierra, you have, I don't show a meeting this month.
Central Sierra Child Support, I have for Monday.
There's a LAFCO meeting Monday, but-
And I have LAFCO?
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have Central Sierra Child Support?
I don't have it down.
Oh, I do.
We went to quarterly, we went to quarterly meetings.
I'll find out. Okay. All right.
All right, I had a flood of meetings like Supervisor Toffenelli, but they didn't cost the county any time. So with that, any items from the staff? Supervisor Alt, excuse me, CIO Alt?
No, sir. Fishing Day. Oh, you want me to cover that? I'm sorry. I had brought that up myself. May 4th, my last official act as a fishing game commissioner was to help move that Kids' Fishing Day forward. I had the honor of being there as CIO, I'd already started. Most importantly, Fishing Game Commission had sponsored the plant of several thousand pounds of fish, I think the number totaled close to a thousand fish. I think it was 3,000 pounds total. We had an all-day event, the Amador Fly Fishers came out and volunteered for the kids, they kept tight lines for all the kids. The commission did a fantastic job and organization. Our own Supervisor Stoppa cooked nearly 200 hot dogs, he had the grill going all day. It was a great event for the community, and it was at, I should have mentioned earlier, it was at Murphy's Park, and it was a perfect place to have the event. And I think, Diane, you, you may know for sure that it's the fourth year that we've had it here, fifth year, more than that?
Probably closer.
Oh, it's been that long?
At that location.
At that loc, I just mean at that location. So four or five years at that location is perfect. So put it on the calendar for next year, it's the first weekend in May every year.
Thank you very much. Counselor?
Nothing to report?
Madam Clerk?
I just want to encourage everyone to participate in the Government Center Frog Jump following this meeting, and good luck to all the frog jockeys.
Thank you, and again, everybody, 11:30, staff, community, I expect, hopefully you all be out jumping your frogs and losing my frog, but I want to thank you for a good meeting, and with nothing further, we stand adjourned.